Okay, this time I'll ask the clerk to establish a quorum by roll call.
Commissioner Blatner.
Present.
Commissioner Askew.
Here.
Chairman Whitfield.
Present.
Commissioner Hart.
Here.
Commissioner Stoltz.
Present.
Okay, all members are present for this meeting. At this time, we have the agenda that's in the packets. We'll ask if there's a board member that would move for a motion to approve our agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion on our agenda? Hearing none, all board members in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is approved. At this time, we do have a public hearing on a couple of items. The first is a request from the estate of Miriam H. Hutchison, the second to rezone property located at zero Happy Valley Road at Highway 2 in Rossville, Georgia 30741, from an R2 slash A1 to a C1 tax map and parcel number 0-102-002. Is there anyone here tonight that wants to come and speak in opposition of this zoning request? This is our second public hearing for this. Is there anyone that wants to speak in opposition? We ask that you come to the podium and ask that you state your name for the record. Okay, hearing or seeing none, anyone that wants to speak in favor of this rezon? Is anyone that wants to come publicly and speak tonight?
Commissioner John Beard, under the Director of the State, I'm glad to explain to the Commissioners if it would help about what's going on there.
Sure, if you would like to, that would be fine.
Okay. So, I am the executor of Miss Hutchison's estate. She died about 15 months ago, and in that time, we have had to liquidate the horse operations there and have been selling real estate. And so, the area has changed a little bit now, but it's getting ready to change even that much more. So, here is the map of the area. We were before the Planning Commission and you, Commissioner Whitfield, last year when you were sole commissioner on this tract right here directly across from Ridgeland High School. And we thought at that time it was C1 because a lot of the property around there is. And that was rezoned into apartments that will be for moderate income housing. That's progressing very well. We expect to close on that. We'd said April the 30th. I don't think it'll make that, but I think we'll be shortly after that. So, the first piece that we came for was rezoning here. And so, we thought all of this was C1 and got a contract to sell this three and a half acres. This is a tract of about 18 acres right here. We sold the back part of it, but the front three and a half acres is what's up for rezoning now along with property that's directly across Highway 2. This, all this property was, of course, owned by the Hutchison family long before the highway came through. And in fact, the maps that are on it still don't show the highway. It's why we had such trouble determining exactly how it was zoned. So, it's, the rezoning for tonight is for this tract right here to be commercial and for this little tract here that's next to the church to be commercial also. In the 15 months since she's died, this entire tract here has been sold. It's been rezoned. There's about 12 acres of C1 right here. So, this corner would be C1 and then C1, C1, and then, of course, the school. And this is going to be a development. I think they're approved for over 500 houses, which is a pretty amazing number considering there's only three on it right now. But whatever they can get, whatever they can get in there. Then, next, the main farm property where the horses have been most recently, the barns are, and the dairy building was, because it's totally gone now, has been sold. They're still working on the plans for that, but it will be some residential and likely some with a retirement home. The person that bought it's in the retirement home business. He loves the big house that's on the property and the pasture land. So, I think that's going to be preserved, but someplace on there I would fully expect retirement homes. This piece here was also sold, and it's probably going to be residential, just regular residential with no change with that, which is good because it backs up to the neighborhood here. This is a little bit closer that shows exactly what's there now, just a hay field that we have cut. This is where the multifamily is going in, and the property up for rezoning tonight is right here. And of course, it's zoned either agriculture or residential now. I can't conceive of that ever being used for residential, either one of those with where they are, and particularly with the growth around there. And these properties I don't think will be developed soon. I know the person that's purchasing this is saying he wants to wait till some of these houses get going, but I'm told that they plan to break ground on those between 60 and 90 days from now. So, at some time, this that's always been pasture land and for horses and cattle is going to be developed primarily residential, but with residential will come some convenience commercial, and there will be development along here. So, we have this property under contract to sell, subject to the rezoning. This is a preliminary drawing of what they would anticipate. Here's Highway 2. Here's Ridgeland right here. Here's where the apartments would be. So, their plan is that they would have entrance down here to the back of the property where it wouldn't be right on Highway 2, a frontage road across here. And this shows a restaurant, a bank branch, and another restaurant. That, of course, could change. They really don't know what, but it would be some sort of uses of that type. I had both the developer as well as the real estate agent say, what do you think these properties would generate conservatively in taxes in a year? Right now, and this is, it's assessed as part of a huge tract, so it's someplace in the low hundreds of dollars of what it brings in. And they're at about $350,000 a year is what this should produce, just this part, revenue-wise, in the various taxes that would be paid, not even counting what would come from the property over here. So, obviously, it's going to be, there's going to be development there largely residential, and with that then comes the need and desire for the commercial, and particularly on the property there that's really not suited for anything else. If we don't sell it commercial, I can't imagine what else we'd be able to use it for.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Great presentation. Okay, the next item on our public hearing tonight is the issuance of a revenue bond by the Development Authority for Walker County. Is there anyone here that wants to speak on that issue tonight? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. We'll go ahead and close out our public hearing at this time. And at this time, the board, you have your minutes from our prior meeting. These are also in the packets. It also can be found on our website. So, we did not have our meeting back on March 25th due to severe weather, so we had to cancel that meeting. So, these are the minutes from the most recent meeting, which was on March the 11th, 2021. So, need a motion to approve these minutes.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Approved as submitted. Okay, at this time of our meeting, we will ask anyone that would like to come up and have their five minutes to make public comments before the board and the staff. Is there anyone that would like to come up and take five minutes to speak at this time on any topic? Okay, hearing none or seeing no one come forward, we'll go ahead and move forward. At this time, we'd like to ask Lisa Eubanks, the Director of the Cherokee Regional Library System, to come up and give us an overview of their operations and programs for all three libraries. And as she's coming up, this is something new that we wanted to do is hopefully each meeting that we have is to have different entities within our county government, whether it be internal or external, or some of our partners that receive funding from our county budget. We wanted to have different ones come in each time and just give about a five-minute overview of what they do, what they've got going on, anything exciting that's happening, and just kind of give us all an update of how things are going. So, thank you for coming tonight. You're our first.
Well, great. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to come and talk about public libraries. They're near and dear to my heart. I've been at the Cherokee Regional Library System 31 years, and so I love opportunities to talk about them. And as you know, there are three library branches in Walker County, Chickamauga, Rossville, and Lafette. And I feel like they're very strategically located. You know, Walker County is huge, 400 square miles. It's a lot. But I think we have them in good locations in our county. And so, folks don't have to travel very far until they come to a library where they can participate in our services. And when they do get to our facilities, they're going to find well-maintained, updated, and modern buildings. And we've been able to do that through a lot of grants, through the state legislation. We've had a lot of help from our local legislators that have helped us get construction dollars. We've also used and paired that with local SPOSS dollars, and we sometimes will get a 50-50 match, but often it's been a 90-10 match. And so, we've really made that money go far to keep our buildings updated and modern. So, if you haven't been to the local branch nearest to you, I think I invite you to come see it. I think you'll be pleased at what you see in our facilities. Now, a lot of folks may be thinking, well, aren't libraries obsolete? I mean, we've got Google. Why do we need a library facility? Well, that couldn't be further from the truth. Of course, people come to our libraries to check out books. And last year, they checked out over 167,000 books and materials. So, libraries are still alive for that. But libraries are also used for a lot of other things, and a lot more than they were 10 years ago. Libraries are used for programming. Families come to our spaces, and we have STEM programming. We have program for all ages. Of course, we're still doing the summer reading where we highlight kids and keep them, having the summer slide hit them. So, there's lots of activities. And if you've been by our branches, the parking lots are always full. There's always full of cars any time of the day. But one of the things I wanted to make sure you were aware of that people use us for is our internet access. Now, you're probably thinking, a lot of people have internet at home, and everybody's got a smartphone. But what we're finding is that most folks are struggling with bandwidth. You know, today you're having to do school and classes and learning and meetings online. That takes up a lot of bandwidth, and sometimes a little phone device is not a big enough screen to participate. So, we've found, especially during the pandemic, that folks have come to our libraries for our spaces. We have lots of study rooms in all of our branches that can be utilized privately, and they can reserve them, and they're able to use our gig speed internet in all of our branches to do that. And that's very important. And we're proud of that, and our libraries are staying up to date with our technology. Some other statistics, we had over 106,000 visitors to our libraries last year in all three Walker County branches, and we have 21,636 current active library cardholders. So, if you think of the population in Walker County, that 21,000 is a pretty good number, and it's heavily used. And while I like statistics and numbers, and they have their place, I think sometimes they don't always tell the whole story. So, I'd like to share a couple of stories that really convey what our library is doing for citizens in Walker County. There was a young mother that came to us and told us about her story. She said she had been commuting about 40 minutes to take her kids to school. She had a class, an online class she was taking that she needed to prepare for. She couldn't get back to her home in time to do it. She was stopping at a convenience store that had Wi-Fi, sitting in the parking lot, doing this class and getting prepared for it, always looking over her shoulder, am I safe here? And when she realized that there was a public library that had a private study room that she could use, and by the time she got to us, she was in tears because she was so relieved to have that space. So, that's the kind of thing that, one of the things that our branches are providing. We also are partnering with our state agencies. And most people would be surprised to know that state agencies, all of the benefits you receive, you apply for them online, and they tell you in the state agency office, well, you can go to the public library. They'll help you. They'll get you on a computer and get you. And so, during the pandemic, when all of the state agencies were closed, we were one of the only libraries in Georgia, especially early on, that opened during the pandemic. And we assisted those folks, got their unemployment renewed, and we would spend sometimes two hours with folks helping them get these state services. So, that's a great partnership that I'm not sure everyone is aware that the public library is providing. And we're happy to do it, but it's just an important partnership. Also, I want to thank you guys for the CARES Act money that we spent last year. We were grateful to receive CARES Act money, and we were able to open our libraries in Walker County seven days a week, 70 hours a week, when a lot of libraries in Georgia were not even open to the public. We put protocols in place, and we provided services. We had the tri-state area came to us and used our services because they could not find another library. We're so proud to do that. We are down, as of the first of the year, two normal hours. We're 40 hours a week in all three libraries. But one of our programs that's continuing is our Time with Teacher Tutor Program, and CARES Act money paid for this. We have had over 1,200 tutor sessions in our libraries, free to the parent and the student, the CARES Act money-paid teachers, Walker County teachers that are currently teaching or recently retired. And it pays them $20 an hour to tutor these students, and it expires at the end of the school year. So, if you guys are getting any of that ARPA money that the government's handing down, and if there's opportunity for more funds, we would love to continue that program in the fall. I know that that ARP money, we're all still trying to decide how it can be used, who's getting it. The school system's probably getting a lot of it too. But we're looking for grants to apply for it because it has been so successful, and those parents are so grateful for it. So, keep your ears filled, and if you hear anything, please, we'd love to partner with you again. And lastly, I know my five minutes are about up. Let me just tell you a little bit about how libraries are funded. Libraries are meant to be funded by the local communities and the tax dollars in those cities. The state money that comes to us is for the administration of the regional library, and then we serve all of the branches. So, in the three Walker County libraries, 44% of the funding comes from the county, that's you guys. 39% comes from the cities, 10% from the school systems, and we bring in 4% across the CIRC desks in fines, late fees, and other things like that. And then the 3% from the state purchases books in our libraries. Not a whole lot, but that is, that's how we're funded. So, you are very important to what we do, and you are the major contributor to what we're doing in Walker County, and we couldn't do it without you, and we appreciate that. I do have to say, though, this year, my staff stepped up during the pandemic and opened these libraries. And as a result, our library system was named Library of the Year for 2020. And I don't know if everyone knew that, but we're going to be proud of that all year long. So, I wanted to make sure I was able to say that here. And then one more thing that's of interest to the county, our Lafette branch has a coffee shop space that's up for grabs. We had a vendor in there, and unfortunately, during the pandemic time, they had a couple of other locations. They just couldn't keep all three open. So, if anybody is interested in a coffee shop in our library, the rent is very reasonable. It's $125 a month. We just wanted it in our library as a service, and it's a great opportunity for a local business to come in and offer that service. And so, I'm sitting there on our website. We have an RFP that's out for you to look at too. But I'd be glad to answer any questions. I think I went through that pretty fast, if anybody has any for me.
The Lafette branch is phenomenal. I've been in several times, and it's just, the study rooms are so nice and just well organized, and your staff has always been very courteous when I've been in. So, you do a great job.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Commissioner. And I do have an awesome staff in all of the branches, and thank you for what you guys are doing. And welcome to the commission board.
Do you accept donations for hardback books? People want to donate books to the library?
We do, and if we need them for the collection, we'll put them on the shelf, or we put them in a book sale, or we take them to Mikae's and get credit for what we do need. So, yeah, we'd be happy to.
Very good.
All right. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Ms. Lisa. I know the library team does a great job, and tell them we very much appreciate their service to the community. So, thank you for being here. Okay, under our old business, we have a resolution. I'll read this. Resolution R-01121, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to approve the issuance of a revenue bond by the Development Authority of Walker County, whereas at least seven days' notice published in the Walker County Messenger, a public hearing was held at the Walker County Annex Courthouse III at 201 South Main, Lafette, Georgia 30728, on March the 11th, 2021 at 7:00 PM, and again on April the 8th, 2021 at 7:00 PM concerning proposed issuance of the Development Authority of Walker County. The authority, its revenue bonds, the bonds is the maximum principal amount not to exceed $19 million. And whereas the proceeds of the sale of the proposed bonds, when and if issued, are to be used along with other funds for the benefit of Gateway at Rossville LP, a Georgia limited partnership, the borrower, to acquire, construct, furnish, and equip an approximately 156-unit multifamily housing community, the project, two, funding reserves, three, pay all or a portion of the cost of issuance of the bond. And whereas the project will be located at 2563 Happy Valley Road, Rossville, Georgia, and will be owned by the borrower and operated by the borrower and its affiliates. And whereas the proposed bond, when and if issued, will not be an obligation of Walker County or of the state of Georgia or of any county, municipality, or political subdivision of the state of Georgia. The proposed bond will not be paid from taxes, but will be payable by the authority solely from the amounts to be paid and provided by the borrower, and no performance audit or performance review shall be conducted with respect to such bond issuance. Whereas Section 147F of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 is amended, the code provides an effect that in the order of the interest of the proposed bond to be executed from the holder's gross income from federal income tax purposes, the public approval requirement of said section must be completed with. And whereas the location of the project is entirely within the county, and the Board of Commissioners of the county, the board constitutes the legal, excuse me, the elected legislative body of the county and is the proper body for granting the necessary public approval. And whereas the authority has requested that the board approve the issuance of the bonds for the purpose stated above, for the nature and the location of the project and the plan of financing for the project with the bonds. And whereas the bond finds and determines that if it is in the public interest of the county to grant such approval, therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County as follows. Section 1, the issuance of the bonds by the authority for the benefit of the borrower in the maximum principal amount not to exceed $19 million for the above-described purpose, the nature and the location of the project, and financing for the project described above and hereby approved for the purposes of Section 147F of the code. Section 2, such approval by the board does not constitute any representation of the county to the prospective purchase of the bonds. It is the creditworthiness of the borrower or the economic feasibility of the project, nor does it create either expressly or by implication any obligation on the part of the county for the payment of the bonds or debt service thereon, such bonds and debt service thereon being payable solely from the sources described above. This resolution shall take effect immediately upon adoption, so resolved and adopted the 8th day of April 2021. So, at this time, does the board have any further discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, we'll call for a motion to approve this resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
We have a motion by Commissioner Askew to approve this resolution. Do we hear a second? We have a second by Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this resolution is approved as presented. Okay, new business. We have another resolution here. This one's much, Resolution R-14-21, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to authorize the application for a USDA rural business development grant, whereas Walker County and its municipalities Rossville, Chickamauga, and Lafette wish to grow their tax base by locating commercial retail establishments such as restaurants, hotels, and other retail businesses. And whereas the county and the cities have a unique opportunity to engage retail strategies to deliver the Retail Academy curriculum to the community leaders of Walker County, Georgia, in order to develop market research and plans to attract retail businesses in the communities. And whereas Walker County intends to apply for and accept a rural business development grant administered by the United States Department of Agricultural Rural Development, USDA RD, therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County that the Walker County Commission Chairperson is hereby authorized and empowered to take all actions necessary or appropriate in the execution of all written instruments as may be required in regards to or as evidence of such grant and to operate the facilities under the terms offered by said grant agreement, so resolved and adopted the 8th day of April 2021. As this resolution reads, this is kind of a joint venture of our cities to get some assistance, training through this Retail Academy. So, this would be open to all the local leadership of our county and our local government. This grant that we're applying for is to fund this 100%. So, it would just be the county's responsibility just to handle the administration and handle the documentation and any audit requirements and so forth. So, there's not any financial obligations or any hooks or anything. This is just for this body to approve this so we can move forward to see if USDA will approve us for this grant. Any questions? Hearing none, we have a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion to approve this resolution.
We have a resolution by Commissioner Stoltz. Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll sign the resolution as presented. Okay, our next resolution is R-15-21, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to appoint members of the Alcohol Beverage Commission, whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County Board is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, and whereas one of the duties delegated to the chairman of the board is to appoint members to all committees of the board with the approval of the board. And whereas vacancies exist on the Alcoholic Beverage Commission due to expiration of terms. And whereas Chairman Whitfield submitted the following appointments to serve as the members of the Alcoholic Beverage Commission, Milton Blevins for a term ending on December 31st of 2022, David Gilliland for the term ending on December 31st of 2022, Chad Bomar for a term ending on December 31st of 2023, and Harold Hughes's reappointment for a term ending on December 31st of 2023. Therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that the appointments of Milton Blevins, David Gilliland, Chad Bomar, and Harold Hughes are approved, so resolved and adopted this 8th day of April 2021. First of all, I want to thank each of y'all for helping with this. Fortunately, all of y'all knew somebody that would be good candidates, so thank you all for your submitting. Actually, each of the four district commissioners all submitted these names each, so this is a representation of our entire community where we have at least one person out of each district. So, again, thank you for your help. This being an appointment and coming from the chairman, I'll present this as a motion. And so, do we have a second to approve this resolution?
Second.
All right, we have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion on these appointments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries to approve this resolution as presented. Okay, our last resolution tonight before we get into our purchase orders. Resolution R-16-21, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to establish certain policies pertaining to the Walker County Animal Shelter, whereas it is the best interest of Walker County Animal Shelter and the citizens of Walker County to have certain policies regarding the animal shelter. Therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Walker County adopts the following policies regarding the animal shelter. Number one, the animal shelter shall be open to the citizens of Walker County five days a week, one of which shall be Saturday. Two, either the animal shelter director or a manager shall be on site at the animal shelter during all hours that the shelter is open to the public. during all hours that the shelter is open to the public. And number three, all adoptable animals shall be placed on the animal shelter page on the Walker County Government website and Walker County Animal Shelter Facebook page for adoptions locally prior to animals being placed on any animal rescue group, so resolved and adopted the eighth day of April, two thousand twenty-one. Any further discussion on this resolution?
Question, just the way you read, that's the manager, the director, and you said or a manager, now we only have one manager, correct?
Yeah, currently, there's only one other manager.
Okay, I just want to make sure that I understood.
Good question. Anything, any other questions? Okay, do we have a motion to approve this resolution from the board?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, Commissioner Blakemore makes a motion, thank you, Mr. Blakemore. So do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Stoltz, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none, the motion, excuse me, the resolution is approved as presented. Okay, our purchase orders at this time. We have a purchase order, two thousand twenty-one dash nine sixty-seven to NAFCO for thirteen sets of line V-force stock pants and coat, turnout gear totaling twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and eight dollars for the Walker County Fire Department. We've asked Fire Chief Lake Hodge if he would come, give us just a brief overview of this investment and what this is going to do for our team.
Thank you, good evening, Commissioners. This request for the thirteen sets of turnout gears for structural firefighting is the coat and pants that we wear. There's expiration of ten years on the life of turnout gears, ten years. We have a large portion of our gear that was two thousand fourteen and then the other half sixteen. However, this is in our capital line item to start replacing in the current budget and hopefully every year so we can start. Our ultimate goal is to have two sets for each firefighter with the exposures we have to cancer-causing, you know, agents and stuff out in the field. We now have, which with the, we got extractors and dryers that we purchased with the COVID-relieve CareZac money. So we now have a professional way to take care of those internally, and so we're looking at different ways that we can make this stuff last as long as we can. This is one way because we end up repairing a lot of this gear. We unfortunately have a lot of structure fires within the county in a year's time, so we have damage to gear quite often that we have to send off and get fixed. So we oftentimes don't see the ten-year life of the gear, that's just a natural expiration of it. It's also custom fit, so it's, you know, when we hire five or six individuals, we may have to buy new gear for some of those, we may have some in our spare sets, but we are down to minimal sets and it's a mixture of sizes. So this is the beginning, hopefully have a good thing where we're going to start replacing gear every year so we can maintain. So I appreciate the consideration.
Sure, yeah, this is very important that all of our firefighters have two sets of gear, and now that we have those new washer extractors, you know, this commercially-built equipment to wash and maintain this, those commercial washers have been a great addition. And we ended up getting five of those, and we got those spread out.
We got them spread throughout the county, and we also purchased the drying cabinets, it's not a tumble, so the gear is moving circulated air in a cabinet versus getting tumbled in a dryer, which is not good for over a long period of time.
And that's really why they need two sets, because if they're involved in a structure fire, when they come back in, they need to take that set off, run it through the cleaning process, and have that other set ready to go. So this is very important, and we really, we're going to work hard over the next couple of years to get everybody in really good sets and be in good order. So do we have any questions for Mr. Hodge?
So this is just, this is budgeted every year, this is, I understand you budgeted on.
We have this in our capital equipment improvement line item that we're with several different items that we have in the line item that we want to renew every year, that needs to be purchased every year.
I understand.
And obviously, in that line item, some things change, if some things fail, we may have to, you know, move other items in front of it, but this is something that needs to happen every year.
Okay.
Congratulations to the class that's going to be graduating Monday.
Monday.
That's exciting.
We have eight individuals, plus one, we have an individual in the class that we coordinated with Lafette High School through work-based learning, who ultimately wants to be a career firefighter. So we're piloting this program to see how we can try to get with all the schools of this, and it's worked great, so we're looking at trying to, in the future, we're going to go to the high school programs and see if we can bring more in, even if they go through it and they volunteer, want to be a career firefighter, whatever. So it's worked well, but we do have going, so we're proud of that accomplishment as well, so.
So if you have a high school student that does that, and they complete it, and they graduate a year later, then they can automatically step into your ranks with that training, or?
So the scenario of this year, the individual turned eighteen this month, which you have to be eighteen in the state of Georgia to be certified, and then graduate in May, you also have to graduate or have GED to be a career firefighter. So that individual through this program will pass national professional qualifications, they've already taken the test, and we're waiting on the written results, they passed the skill set. So when they graduate, the day after they graduated in May, they could fill out application and become, and be hired on as full-time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hodge, for that. At this time, we'll move for a motion to approve purchase order nine sixty-seven for thirteen sets of turnout gear, two thousand two hundred and sixteen dollars per set for a total of twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and eight dollars. Do we have a motion for this purchase?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Blakemore, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Commissioner Askew, any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, purchase order is approved as presented. Okay, our next purchase order, two thousand twenty-one, is through National Auto Fleet Group for three new two thousand twenty-two Ford Super Duty F-250s, extended cab, crew cab, with the Cat Napier service bodies, also snow equipment, which is very important, each totaling fifty-seven thousand one hundred and seventy-four dollars and sixty-six cents for the total package, for a grand total of one hundred and seventy-one thousand five hundred and twenty-three dollars and ninety-eight cents, and this would be funded out of our two thousand twenty splosh. So is Carlin Bowers still with us? Carlin, you want to speak on this? I know you've done a lot of research and homework and specking all of this out, so I'd like for you to give us a good overview of your research.
So went through Sourcewell, which used to be NJPA, I don't know if you guys are familiar with that. They put, one of their contractors is National Auto Fleet Group, went through about five revisions on this, they, you go through, spec the trucks out to exactly what you want, they give you the truck price from the factory, and then you get the Sourcewell price. So each truck is about thirty-six thousand dollars apiece, then the NAPID truck beds and the snow equipment, all that, they'll be coming from the factory, going to Griffin, Georgia, to the NAPID place, they'll get the beds and all the snow equipment put on those, and then they'll show up to us at, probably, it's going to take a while to get them here, just like everything right now, but these trucks are going to be used for primarily following the mowers right now. We've got several that are down motor problems, it's just going to cost more to fix the ones that got down versus getting new ones, it just makes more sense to get rid of the old All the snow equipment is Western, we have a lot of, we went with Western because we have Western parts already, most of all of our stuff currently Western. Just pretty much whenever we get them, all we should have to do is put stickers on them and tag and hit the road, so shouldn't have to do a whole lot with them, they should come ready to go.
Since I've been a Commissioner, this is the first time that we have had the funding, and thankfully because of the splosh, to be able to make any additional investment into our snow equipment. Some of the equipment we've got's got a lot of wear and tear on it, but this will diversify our fleet even more to give us better coverage, so these trucks will be used year-round, you know, as soon as we get them in, we'll use them as a follower truck, maintenance-type truck with the maintenance beds on them for our mowing crews, but come next winter, hopefully we won't have any snow this year, but come next winter, these trucks very quickly will have the quick attachments on them to be able to put the snow plow and then to put the tailgate spreader on the back very easily, very quickly, so this is a total package. This going through Sourcewell that gives us all of the national account government pricing, so it takes out, we're not having to run around and get bids and different things, this is going through a national program that gets us the government pricing. So thank you, Carlin, I know you've put a lot of time in this, like you say, gone through this four or five times, tweaking all the specifications out, and it is going to take several weeks, once the board approves these, to get all of this in, because all suppliers are having issues with getting materials, and so it's going to be probably a few months actually.
Twenty-six weeks, I believe.
Yeah, it's going to be at least twenty-six weeks, it's going to take about a half a year to get these in, so that's why they're specking out twenty-two models, yeah, it's just not in.
Just a quick question, Mr. Carlin, have we got any more? Is this going to get us up pretty close, or are we looking at something else coming down the pipe fairly quick? Because my question being, if we're looking at twenty-something weeks out, I'm just curious as to, is this going to get us by for a while?
Right now, as far as going out at the moment, we're doing the best we can with what we've got, we're swapping things around in the, as far as our Bobcat trucks, I mean, we've got a handful that we can move around. We do have two more that we're looking into, a little bit of extra research, I guess, we need to do, we just got to work out some bugs on that.
We've got some more that will be coming forward, we've got to get something in some larger trucks.
That's what I was saying, that's going to just kind of.
About that F-250 range, so maybe by the next, within the next meeting or two, we'll have that for the board to look at as well.
Awesome.
But this is all that we had ready to go.
Perfect.
Good question, any other questions for Mr. Bowers? Okay.
Thank you, Carlin.
Okay, purchase order, two thousand twenty-one dash one zero six zero, this is for three Ford F, excuse me, two thousand twenty-two Ford Super Duty F-250, four-wheel drive with the service bodies and snow equipment. The unit price is fifty-seven, excuse me, fifty-seven thousand one hundred and seventy-four dollars and sixty-six cents for a total purchase order of one hundred and seventy-one thousand five hundred and twenty-three dollars and ninety-eight cents, all to be paid with cash out of our splosh proceeds. Do we have a motion to approve this purchase order?
Yes, sir, I'll make a motion.
Have a motion by Commissioner Hart, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Stoltz, any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, all Commissioners in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the purchase order is approved as presented. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a quitclaim deed between Walker County Government and Stonewall Jackson Wingfield III. If I can sign. If I've done with that. Yes, I've lost my place here, sorry about that, thank you. Okay, this is quitclaim deed made the twenty-fifth day of March, two thousand twenty, Walker County, Georgia. Wherein after regard to as the grantor, Stormwell Jackson Wingfield III, June Deed Wingfield, Stonewall Jackson Wingfield IV, Joseph D. Wingfield, Jennifer Wingfield, and Jared M. Wingfield, here as collectively referred to as the grantee, the grantee for, for and in consideration of one dollar in other goods and valuable consideration, barter sold and other presents, does remiss release and forever quitclaim to grantee, the heirs, their signees and all rights titles, interests claimed or deemed the grantor has made, had in, and to, following described property, see Exhibit A attached hereto, incorporated, whereas by reference to having to hold unto guarantee, grantee so that neither grantor nor the successor or the signees nor any other person claiming under them shall at any time be any means or ways have claimed or deemed all rights to title to the fore-said real estate or its presumptuous, I guess, am I saying that right?
Apportance.
Apportance, okay, thank you, or any rights thereof and witness thereof, grantor, by and through its dual authorist officers, and executing this deed on the day and year set forth above. So you have this, all the legal description, and this is quitclaiming this property back to the Wingfield family. Any questions or comments from the board?
Commissioner, if I may.
Yes, sir.
This was prepared with the anticipation that was going to be signed at the meeting at the end of March, and so with the permission of the board, I would change the date, I also see that it reportedly says March of two thousand twenty, but I will make sure that it says the today's date. So with the permission, you can go ahead and execute it, and I would just substitute page one, and also I see in the witness thereof paragraph, the word by, it says BYE, so we will correct that as well.
Okay, yeah, thank you, this was on our agenda from our last meeting, and we had to postpone due to the weather, so the date did not get updated. Any other questions concerned from the board? All right, hearing none, call for the vote, do we have a motion to approve? We have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Askew, any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll sign this. Okay, thank you for that. Okay, we have a request from the estate of the Mary M. Hutchinson, the second rezoned property located at zero Happy Valley Road at Highway two in Rossville, Georgia, three oh seven four oh one from R two slash A one to C one, tax map impartial, zero dash one oh two dash zero zero two. This was the presentation we saw earlier from Mr. Beard, this had went before the Planning Commission, their minutes are attached to this, the Planning Commission, their recommendation was unanimous to this body, to, their recommendation was to approve this and move this action item forward, so is there any questions or comments from the board at this time?
No, sir.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve this request for rezoning?
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hart, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Askew, any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any board members opposed?
No.
Hearing none, we'll prove this as submitted. At this time, the next item on our agenda is comments from our Commissioners, so Commissioner Blakemore, we've got you all pulled up there on Google Meet, so anything you'd like to share with us tonight?
Yeah, just some exciting stuff going on far as roadwork up here, I noticed today, tally has started milling up Happy Valley Road from McFarland headed back toward Highway two, so that's fixing to be new and paved, and it's going to be looking good.
There you go.
And we did start some new stuff on the Operation Rossville Playground Facebook page for some more fundraisers for our playground here in Rossville, so anybody watching would check that out, we would appreciate it. that out, we would appreciate it.
All right, very good, thank you, sir. Commissioner Askew?
Oh, just a couple of things, of course, we postponed last, last two weeks ago, but today was Saddle Ridge's little plant sale at their school, so we hope that they had a successful sale, and we want to thank Betsbury for what she does with them up there, and Gordon Lee's plant sale will be Saturday, the 10th, from 8 to 12 for the FFA there at Gordon Lee High School, so if you haven't got your spring plants, please try to help out the school system, these kids work hard to get them started. Just like I said, like I say, it's obvious by the pollen and everything, spring is sprung, so I think all of our local vendors are getting stocked up on plants and produce will be coming in, so I'd like to encourage everybody to please buy local and support our local businesses and all, and in closing, I would say that down, Chickamauga downtown on Saturdays now, they're, from now, I guess, until season ends, will be having kind of open-air markets and little crafts and things, so if you're up that way, please stop in and help us, you know, help us out up there as well, so.
I believe the train's coming in this weekend.
The train is, and that's what, if you're, Tennessee Valley Railroad Museum, if you'll go on their site, they've published their schedule, and they'll be running quite a few trips, and if you've not ever got an opportunity to go and experience that, they've got everything from the short day, you know, the little short runs to long runs, and so, yeah, we're looking forward to that, so appreciate Ms. Eubanks and what the libraries do, those numbers were intriguing, and I, we tend to think that with, with modern technology, that books go away, but obviously, they don't, and the facilities are phenomenal, like I said, I wanted to compliment on that as well, that's beyond.
Thank you. Commissioner Hart?
Yeah, a lot of exciting things going on in District 3 in Lafayette, especially the steering committee started by, working with UGA on that, those meetings start up next week, so we're looking forward to that. We attended a great event last week over in the, in the West Lafayette area at the Marsh Theater District, and the Chamber of Commerce put that on, and a lot of exciting things officially going on there, we've got possibly a new barbecue restaurant opening up over there that we're real excited about, looking forward to eating there, so great things happening there. Robert?
Yes, absolutely. So, two weeks ago, our county braced for a significant weather event, and I just want to thank all of the volunteers who covered the shelters, the civic center, the community centers, just thanks to all the volunteers, thank you also for our Fire Department, our EMS, Public Works, Road Department, you guys did a great job, Animal Shelter was also involved to take care of pets that came through, so just wanted to say, job well done to everyone. Also wanted to mention that today, Governor Kemp discontinued all of the COVID restrictions, which is wonderful, so I would encourage people moving forward to get vaccinated, if you've had one, get that second vaccine, it is what's going to help us to get immunity in our county, in our state, in our country. I would also like to say, with businesses reopening at springtime, patronize those small businesses, those restaurants, those mom-and-pop stores, gas stations, tire operations in our county, let's keep our dollars local and support these small business owners. And finally, I just want to say, next Saturday, April the 17th, the Walker County Republican Party is having their yearly convention, it's going to be at the Civic Center, and it'll be an exciting day, you can check out their website for times and things like that, but it should be a great event. Thank you.
Commissioner Stoltz, just to add a couple more things, our mowing crews got started this week, so be careful on our county roads to be watching for the mowing crews, we've got them out and going, so just be cautious as you go around corners or over hills, if you come up on a mowing crew. Very excited about the paving projects, the tally was able to get started, as Commissioner Blakemore mentioned earlier, this week will be paving 52 miles of road this summer, so be watching out for paving equipment and those slowdowns as well. Also, we do have some, some road closings that will be forthcoming over the summer, where we have drainage tiles and different work that we're going to do, getting prepared for different roads for paving, so I know over Mission Glen subdivision, I believe it's next Wednesday, Overbrook Drive, starting at 8:00 a.m., will be closed as they work on replacing a drainage culvert on Overbrook Drive, so you'll have to go out the back entrance if you live in Mission Glen subdivision, so keep up on our Facebook page and website, it's going to be a busy summer, there's a lot going on in county government, we're going to try to get as much work done as we can, while the weather hopefully will be good and cooperative for us. So, at this time, our next item on our agenda is listed as executive session, do we have a motion to go into an executive session? If so, please state the reason.
I'll make a motion that we go into executive session for the discussion of personnel.
Okay, we have a motion to go into executive session for personnel reasons, do we have a second?
Executive.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, so we'll take this recess, and as soon as we complete our executive session, we will come back out and see if there's any action items, or if not, we'll close out our meeting at that time, so we'll be back real soon, thank you.
Hi, I'm Joe Leguie, Public Relations Director for Walker County Government. The board has just entered executive session. This is a process that allows elected officials to discuss a specific, sensitive topic behind closed doors. These are topics that are exempt from the Georgia Open Meetings Act. Executive session topics must fall into one of three categories: litigation, real estate or personnel matters. In terms of litigation, the need may arise for the board to consult with the county attorney on pending or potential lawsuits, settlements, claims, administrative proceedings, or other judicial actions brought by or against Walker County Government, its officers, or employees. Real estate covers discussions regarding the future purchase or acquisition, disposal, or lease of property. Personnel matters would cover the discussion or deliberation on the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action, or dismissal of a Walker County government officer or employee. Now, if a vote is needed pertaining to an issue discussed in the executive session, it must be taken in an open meeting, otherwise, it is not binding. There's no timetable set for an executive session, it could last five minutes or even five hours. Because we don't know how long it will be before the board resumes the regular meeting, we will end this livestream shortly and start a new feed when the executive session concludes. Now make sure that you turn on your notifications for the Walker County Government Facebook page, so you're alerted when the meeting resumes. Under your follow settings for this page, scroll down to the notifications, then select live video and click on all notifications. Thanks for watching, and we'll be back in a bit.
It only takes a moment.
To make a lasting impression.
When you see a food wrapper, a bag.
A cup.
A cigarette butt.
It just looks nasty.
And if you're caught littering.
You could be fined.
Given community service.
Or even publicly shamed on the internet.
We live in one of the most scenic counties in America.
A county I'm proud to call home.
This is my home.
My home.
My home.
Take pride in where you live.
Because Walker rocks.
Let's put a lid on litter.
PM, and we have adjourned out of executive session, there's no action to come out of executive session, so unless there's other action from the board, we'll need to officially adjourn this meeting, so do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, sir.
Do we have a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Hart? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Stoltz, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much, we are officially adjourned, thank you.